13 bike stations all over the waterfront.
This bike sharing is really an important new mobility tool that will improve access to waterfront destinations.
Since it was first introduced in downtown LA last year, the Metro Bike Share program has helped take 471,000 pounds of carbon dioxide emissions out of our air. Now that's reason enough to start pedaling. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
So far downtown LA, Pasadena and San Pedro have gotten the Metro bikes with Venice next by the end of summer. For more information, visit metro.net/bikeshare. Also in San Pedro, they arrived representing 14 nations. When they left, they were all Americans. Gil Reyes takes us to a special citizenship ceremony onboard the USS Iowa.
Please raise your right hands and repeat after me.
Meet LA's newest United States citizens.
There's no words to describe how happy we are today that we are all becoming American citizens and I feel like that's the dream of everyone here living in this country.
Fernanda Manzano is among the 41 young people taking the oath of allegiance onboard the USS Iowa battleship in San Pedro. Their ages range between seven and 22 years old. They became eligible for citizenship when their parents were naturalized.
I am so honored and excited to say to you greetings, my fellow Americans.
U.S. Senator Kamala Harris attends the ceremony. Harris, the daughter of immigrants herself. Her mom is from India, her dad from Jamaica. She tells the group that immigrants built this country and to exercise the rights as Americans.
Get involved. Attend town hall meetings or city council meetings. Run for offices yourselves. Vote. All of these are the responsibilities of the citizenship you have now earned.
New American Victoria Keller has enjoyed life in the U.S. for years now, but among friends and classmates, something's been missing until now.
For them, it's like you're not really part of the country, so it's nice to kind of just be like officially part of the country.
Not to mention new privileges like the right to vote, to run for public office, to be eligible for federal benefits, and to be able to travel abroad for long periods of time without fear of deportation. San Pedro Councilmember Joe Buscaiino is also here. Buscaiino, a first-generation Italian-American.
It reminded me a lot of my family when they first came here to San Pedro, to the Los Angeles. And their story is no different than our story. A story of opportunity, of faith, of love, of family, and this city of Los Angeles continues to welcome everyone from all over the world.
Onboard the USS Iowa in San Pedro, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week. LA's newest Americans come from Mexico, Egypt, Nigeria, the Philippines, and several other nations. Well, just like many of those new U.S. citizens, many come to realize the American dream. And as one family who came from Mexico shows us, the American dream is alive and well if you work hard. Rasha Goel has more.
In 1926, Mexican immigrant Ignacio Lozano founded La Opinión, which became the first Spanish-language print newspaper in the LA area. Today, the paper celebrates its 90th anniversary, and the Lozano family is being honored for bridging a gap through media.
It really wasn't until La Opinión existed that I think a lot of Latinos here in LA had a source of information and empowerment that was really needed.
The Lozano family received the Pobladores Award and were recognized as local trailblazers. In fact, not only is La Opinión the second-most-read newspaper in Los Angeles, it is the largest Spanish-language newspaper. Monica Lozano, member of the Lozano family and former publisher of the paper, remembers her grandfather Ignacio Lozano's legacy.
And the fact that he had such commitment and such dedication to providing news and information to the Latino community and that we can carry that on over three generations in 90 years is just extraordinary. So for me, this is a celebration of the founder of La Opinión, Ignacio Lozano.
Recognizing Latino media pioneers is part of La Plaza's mission to cultivate an appreciation for Latino history, art, and culture.
Our museum is dedicated to the founding of Los Angeles by the original Pobladores, the families who came up from Mexico in 1781. And we do that through exhibitions that we conduct here. We have permanent historical exhibitions that tell the history of Los Angeles, and we also have changing exhibitions that are historical or artistic in nature.
And by recognizing those who are making an impact in the community, as did the Lozano family. And for publisher Ignacio Lozano Jr., he says the mission was no longer to be a Mexican newspaper published in Los Angeles, but an American newspaper that happens to be published in Spanish. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The annual dinner is a charity event and raised $200,000 to support La Plaza's educational programs. Well, sure, Northern California is famous for wine country, but once upon a time, Los Angeles was primo for vino. Gil Reyes reports on some old-school winemaking LA-style. Built in 1818, Avila Adobe on Alvera Street is the oldest standing home in Los Angeles. The site also shares history with downtown LA's last remaining winery, San Antonio Winery.
The actual original San Antonio winery was actually here on site, but the grapes that you see in the oldest house in the city of Los Angeles at the Avila Adobe Museum is actually still producing grapes.
Enter LA City archivist Michael Holland. He's also an amateur winemaker. Holland and fellow vintner Wes Hagan decided to make wine out of the Alvera Street grapes. They shared their creation at this annual spirit symposium at Avila Adobe. Their wine, a classic Angelica, was the same variety created by Mission Padres over a century ago, back when Los Angeles County was the epicenter of winemaking, long before Napa Valley.
This is a very small, little hidden piece of Los Angeles' history. Southern California used to be, had more acreage in grapes and more wineries than Northern California until about the 1890s, when the property around here became more valuable for housing and freeways and roads and various things like that.
We were making tons of wine at San Gabriel Mission in Los Angeles until we had a disease come up called Anaheim disease or Pierce's disease. That happened simultaneously with the gold rush starting in Northern California. So all the money, all the grapes moved north to Northern California while Southern California viticulture sort of languished and died.
But LA's link to the past lives on with these vines on Alvera Street. DNA tests show they're at least 150 years old, possibly the oldest grapevines in California. Los Angeles also still has San Antonio Winery on Lamar Street. Downtown's last remaining winery turns 100 years old this fall.
It is a part of the culture, a part of the history, what makes Los Angeles, Los Angeles. And the family has been here several generations, and they wouldn't even dream of being anywhere else but Los Angeles.
Still the toast of the coast with or without wine country. On LA's Alvera Street, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week. And you can see quite possibly the oldest grapevines in California live, free, and up close at Avila Adobe on Alvera Street. Well, here's an important reminder as kids head back to school: watch the road, especially near school zones. Anna Marcos joins us from the valley with more. Anna?
Yana, as more than 55 million students around the country head back to school, educators and traffic advocates want to make sure they stay safe, especially here in LA. They have some tips for parents, students, and drivers. It's a stark and graphic demonstration. This is a kid's brain in a helmet, and this is the same kid's brain without a helmet after an accident. What'd you see there? What'd you learn?
A break.
And that could be your brain, right? If they have a helmet on, 85% of them are going to walk away. Helmets save lives.
You don't really think about using helmets, so it's an eye-opener.
Bikes and helmets, just one of the many lessons as the "Schools Open Drive Carefully" campaign takes off in LA and the country. It's an effort to get drivers, students, and parents putting child and traffic safety first as classes start up again. Drivers through the summer haven't seen kids out on the street, so now it's going to be the perfect storm. The campaign is a yearly joint effort by AAA, the LA Unified School District, and traffic safety groups. The biggest takeaway for drivers: always be on the alert for pedestrians and bikes. No texting and driving, and slow down.
If a car is moving at 40 miles per hour, there's only a 10% chance that that child will survive. At 20 miles per hour, that student has an 80% chance of living.
We know that taking your eyes off the road for just two seconds doubles your chances of being involved in a crash.
Parents should obey school traffic rules and pay attention to drop-off and pickup points. And kids, look before you step out on the street. Use a crosswalk, and if you're on a bike, wear a helmet. Close to 2,000 kids were injured or killed in California pedestrian accidents in 2015. Just about all of those could have been prevented. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more information on school safety tips, visit tripleA.com/schoolsafety. The LAPD considers deploying drones during selected tactical operations. Designers go for a walk on the wild side to benefit the LA Zoo, and Metro Rideshare marks its first birthday. All these stories in City B. The Los Angeles Police Department took its first step towards starting a drone pilot program. LAPD Assistant Chief Beatrice Gormala presented the department's plan for a pilot program for limited use of drones to the Board of Police Commissioners. Gormala said the department plans to hold a series of public meetings to get feedback on the program, then draft official guidelines before bringing the pilot program back to the commissioners for approval. The guidelines the LAPD is considering would create limited uses for drones that would respect First and Fourth Amendment rights and that the devices would not be used for general surveillance. Criteria for their use would include high-risk tactical operations, risk of exposure to hazardous materials, detection of explosive devices, barricaded armed suspect responses, and hostage rescues. A special exhibit of international art, fashion, and film was held recently benefiting the LA Zoo and Botanical Gardens Conservation Program and to celebrate the zoo's 50th anniversary. Put on by Moda 360, the event featured a sustainable runway fashion show called "A Walk on the Wild Side," with creations by artists and designers reflecting the species, habitats, and conservation projects. The goal of the 2017 exhibit was to highlight sustainability and the importance of preserving the habitats and inhabitants of our planet. It's been one year since Metro launched its Bike Share program. Metro and community members came out to mark the occasion. Officials say there have been more than 180,000 rides on Metro Bike Share in the first year.
It's a celebration of Los Angeles making way and room for bikes as a mode of transportation.
Cops took to the streets recently not to make arrests, but to nurture trust and establish bonds with community members. Gil Reyes reports from National Night Out, where the public seemed receptive. With LA City Attorney Mike Thier up front, people marched to LAPD's Olympic Station for a night of bonding between cops and communities.
We feel your strength. We feel your love. We are only as successful as you and your partnerships allow us to be.
With food and fun, National Night Out gives families a chance to get to know their local officers and the problems they face. This summer, it's a spike in robberies, up 28% in the Koreatown East Hollywood area between June and July. Police say crooks are targeting people on cellphones.
So we have a big push about trying not to be distracted when you're out and about. Don't talk on the phone, you know, take the music off, be aware of your surroundings because most of the robberies that occur, they walk up behind you, they grab your phone, or they just get right in front of you and you have no idea.
Though gaining public trust is the goal, law enforcement continues to be plagued by bad press. Recently, former LA County Sheriff Lee Baca was sentenced to prison on charges stemming from FBI investigations into inmate abuse in his jails. And at LAPD, scandal in the cadet program. Several accused of stealing cars and equipment, one adult officer accused of sexual relations with an underage cadet. Despite all this, LA City Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell strongly supports local cops.
Are there tragic issues with abuse of law enforcement? Absolutely, but it is an infinitesimal percentage compared to all of the good that are done by law enforcement.
I come to support my community.
Myri Alonso appreciates Olympic Station's free domestic violence classes for women.
I feel about the cops, they help people.
Joshua Pop says he'd like to become an officer someday.
Of course, Olympic Division, not the only LAPD agency doing this tonight, so are Devonshire Division, Foothill Division, and Wilshire Division, among so many other law enforcement agencies across Southern California. Reporting from National Night Out, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Though Councilmember O'Farrell supports a full investigation into the cadet incident, he also strongly supports that the program continue. Support Studio City with a Neighborhood Street Fair, enjoy Disney's Moana on the big screen for free, and celebrate the unique flavor of Echo Park. All this and this week's things to do. Alternative Entertainment and the Studio City Business District, in partnership with Councilmember Paul Krikorian, present the Studio City Street Festival. Eat, shop, play, and support your local community with 60 vendors, great music, local shops and restaurants. The festival takes place Saturday, August 19th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at 12001 Ventura Place. If you haven't seen Disney's Moana, here's your chance. Join this adventurous teenager as she sails out on a daring mission to save her people. Along the way, she meets a once-mighty demi-god who joins her on this action-packed adventure. The screening takes place on August 19th at 10:00 a.m. at the Madrid Theater in Canoga Park, but you must register first. Visit bloomingfield.lacity.org. Watch your favorite bands play for free during Echo Park Rising, a neighborhood event that focuses on the music, creativity, diversity, and small businesses of Echo Park. There are multiple stages and activities throughout the weekend located on main routes of Sansa Boulevard, Glendale, Alvarado Avenue, and Echo Park Avenue. More than 300 bands will descend on the neighborhood of Echo Park for one free weekend of outdoor shows. In addition to the lineup of artists performing, shops, galleries, restaurants, all come together to celebrate the vibrancy of this eclectic boulevard. It all takes place on Thursday, August 17th through Sunday, August 20th. For more, visit EPR.la. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Watch the road.
Hi, I'm Mike from Los Angeles. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, everyone. If you would please, please take your seats. Today is Friday. Today is Friday, August 18th. Welcome to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call a roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscagino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weisler, Corretts, Krikorian, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Bonin moves. Mr. Price seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Krikorian moves, and Mr. Sadio seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there are requests to receive and file one C-F-I-L in as much as the liens were paid in full, and to continue one O to September 22nd, 2017, and one P to September 19th, 2017, and finally, to reduce the lien for one N to $3,506.72 in as much as the liens were partially paid.
Okay, thank you. Without objection, that will be the order. Continue.
Items one and two are items noticed for public hearing, and, Mr. President, there are cards on both.
Okay, then, continue.
Items three through nine are items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items eight and nine have been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Chair, I'd like to ask that we continue item number eight until Tuesday.
No, without objection. Madam Clerk, what day is that? It's the 22nd, August 22nd? Okay. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Continue, Madam Clerk.
Items 10 through 14 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on those items?
Yes, sir. There are cards on 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, sir.
Okay, thank you. Let's, that brings us where?
That brings council to presentations. Item's called Special General Public Comment, sir.
Why don't I recognize Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd just like to take this opportunity to welcome a group of incoming freshmen from Loyola, Marymount University, participating in the Learning Community Program. This is the LMU class of 2021. Why don't you stand up and be recognized, class? All right, a great, a great group of scholars, a great group of scholars. I'd like to note that my Deputy Chief of Staff, Leslie Wall, is a graduate of LMU, as is my Chief of Staff, and so, who's a graduate of Loyola Law School. So, we're keeping Loyola in the house. Anyways, again, for our scholars, they deserve our congratulations and support. Keep up the good work. Now, Mr. President, it is a special honor that we recognize Royal Forest Oaks for three decades of legal commentary on the Los Angeles airwaves. Royal is a lifelong Angelino, born and raised right here in Los Angeles. Councilmember Corretts, he attended UCLA and UCLA Law School, and has lived and worked for many years at a downtown law firm since graduation. He served for 20 years as general counsel on the Radio and Television News Association of Southern California, a role that required him to appear in court for high-profile cases, including Michael Jackson, O.J. Simpson, and Robert Blake. He covered Jerry Sandusky's trial, Casey Anthony, Conrad Murray, and George Zimmerman, to name a few. Royal is dedicated to giving back to the community and has provided hours of thoughtful and provoking legal commentary on his home station at KABC. He serves as legal analyst for ABC News, and was provided, and provided commentary for Inside Edition, Tonight, and Extra. He's received two Golden Mike Awards for his efforts, and just recently launched his own national show on CRN Digital Talk Network. Please join with me in welcoming Royal Oaks to the podium.
Good morning, sir, and welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman Price, and to all of the members of the council. Thank you so much for this humbling honor. I'm usually getting about 10, 15 seconds on the air. I won't be much longer than that today. But it's been such a privilege for all these years to work with such amazing journalists and talk about cases that have been on people's radar screens. I have to say, I was humbled years ago, though, because back when I was on the air, Fairmont, talking about O.J. Simpson. My wife Lauren was in the dry cleaners, and a lady came up to her, and she said, "Oh, I just found out who your husband is. I'm so excited. I'm such a fan." And Lauren said, "Oh, thank you." And the lady said, "I didn't realize. You're Mrs. Erwin Chimerinsky." And Lauren said, "No, no, I'm married to Royal Oaks." And she said, "Who?" I was okay with the story until the "who" part. But, in any event, I just want to thank the people who have helped me along the way here. First and foremost, my family. My wife Lauren is here today.
Where is she? Let's give her, where are you?
My wife Lauren, our daughter Claire.
Welcome.
And her son Ben, and my son Connor. And our daughter Faye is way at school back east, so she couldn't be here. I want to thank the folks in broadcasting who've helped me along. Back in the '80s at KPCC, Larry Mantle said yes. KFWB, Bill Jaeger said yes. KABC Radio, I've been proud to be affiliated with for many years. They're the class act in town for decades. Drew Hayes was kind enough to come here. He's the program director without compare. Doug McIntyre has been so terrific. There is no better talk show host anywhere. Nathan Baker, no better executive producer anywhere. Mike Horn of CRN Digital launched our worldwide web show. I'm very grateful to him. Steve Seid is here. He's the world's best PR man. Want to thank the folks at Inside Edition, Jim Ray, and Tony Coghlan, Cheryl Lamoth. Want to thank also the folks at KNBC. Certainly, Jack Noys, Colleen Williams and Chuck Henry, Robert Cavasik, and about 20 other folks. KBC Television, Cheryl Farr and Millie Martinez. And I have to say thanks to my law firm, Dick Barker, founder of Barker &amp; Mullen. We lost last year, but his daughter Catherine is working hard on the Supervisors Board a few blocks from here. My friends Tom Miller and his wife Linda here. He was, he is UCLA's debate coach. Unprecedented string of national championships. Want to thank Hinshaw Culbertson's leader, Kevin Burke, who is hugely supportive. Ken Jeffries of KABC Radio is here, formerly KFWB. He of the incomparable radio voice. Perhaps his late friend Gary Owens compared, but Ken is amazing. Just wanted to thank everybody for all these years. Thank you so much.
Now, thank you for all your years of service. Thank you.
Royal, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we thank you for your years of service and continue the good work. Thank you.
Mr. Wesson, are you ready for your presentation?
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. President and members. Now, we have been fortunate. We have been fortunate for over 10 years to once or twice a month bring dogs into this chamber and find them homes. Companion animals that they will love you even when you, even when you don't pet them as much as they would like, they're gonna love you. So, we have with us today young Lola, right? Loa?
Lola.
Lola. Lola. She was a showgirl, okay? We, we have with us today, we have Lola, who's two months old, and a mixed terrier. But, this is the second time that this has happened, so I don't know what's going on. But we have, what's your name, sir?
Terry Saunders.
Terry Saunders. Terry Saunders saw her at the shelter, I think this morning, and followed her to City Hall. So, she stole Terry Saunders' heart before I could really offer her to any one of you. Terry, I can assure you that Lola was not gonna last more than one minute here on these council. She's definitely a first-round draft pick. But for those of you that see gorgeous Lola and have fallen in love with her, I want you to know that we have shelters throughout the City of Los Angeles, and we have, believe it or not, a lot of Lolas that are just waiting for someone to come and find them and to fall in love. So, if you do have an interest, you want to go to one of our shelters, they just took the phone number off the screen, just call, and we will give you the locations of our shelters where you can go. But today, I am going to officially present you with your new companion animal. Why don't you quickly tell us what you did so that I can figure out a way to get the dogs here quicker? Why don't you, again, introduce yourself and tell us what attracted you to her?
Good morning. My name is Terry Saunders, and I have three kids at home that are gonna be so excited. They have no idea. We have been looking for a dog for a while. We've been going from shelter to shelter to shelter. And when we saw this one, we just absolutely fell in love. And so, they said it was gonna be an event here today, and I said, "Okay, I'm gonna have to take off of work," but... I hope my boss isn't listening. I am, I am a physician assistant at UCLA. I do HIV research.
Okay, well, we have, we have connections at UCLA. Mr. Sadio, I want you to call UCLA and make sure he's good, all right? Anyway, let's give Lola and him a round of applause. Terry?
And Terry, we're happy to write your absent note for work. All of us will sign it. Thank you very much for being here. Mr. O'Farrell, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. Today, we have a very, very special presentation, and I'm joined today by our city attorney, Mike Fuhr, and someone on his team that helped with this groundbreaking ordinance that we passed over three years ago, now Norma Manzania from the city attorney's office. I want to welcome everyone to Los Angeles City Hall, especially our esteemed professors, doctors, graduate students, and colleagues of the USC Keck School of Medicine. In 2014, this council fought Big Tobacco, and we won. I collaborated on an initiative with Paul Corretts and then Councilmember Bernard Parks, along with public health researchers from USC Keck School of Medicine, Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, Los Angeles Unified School District, and community health advocates all over the place to pass two ordinances to regulate the use of e-cigarettes the same way we regulate all tobacco products in Los Angeles. E-cigarettes are chiefly nicotine delivery devices disguised as harmless recreational vaping mechanisms. They are a dangerous gateway product largely owned by Big Tobacco that strive to recruit a new generation of customers into nicotine addiction for profit, which would reverse decades of global progress in reducing the health devastation brought on by smoking tobacco. It was important for us as policymakers then to protect children, people in the workplace, and future generations from the toxic vapor emitted from e-cigarettes and a lifelong, often deadly, addiction. We relied on the expert testimony of our honorees, Doctors Samet and Byzakande Garbenati, and their medical and scientific expertise in tobacco control, research, and prevention to pass the e-cigarette ordinances in the City of Los Angeles. L.A. had the most credible experts on our side. Therefore, we want to thank both of you for your contributions and leadership. Now, as someone who lost all four grandparents and both parents to tobacco addiction and the declining health effects brought on by addiction to nicotine and cancer and other ailments, I am not alone in this universe of those affected by the dangers of tobacco. There are many more around us, and we have a responsibility to prevent future generations from suffering the same fate. I would now like to bring our partner, who helped make all of this possible right along our side, instrumental in drafting the important ordinance, to say a few words, and that is our city attorney, Mike Fuhr. Mike?
Mitch, thank you very much. You know, the public health is founded on science and research and education, but it's also founded on action. also founded on action. And we're here today to celebrate two individuals who epitomize the best of public health. You know, I've been working on issues relating to tobacco and underage, preventing underage use, and trying to make the public more healthy for more than 20 years. But one of the most extraordinary achievements that has been enacted with regard to public health and this whole area of smoking is, as Mitch indicated, the council's work on e-cigarettes. I'll get to that in just a second, because for years, we've seen empowered residents focus on issues that range from the sale of tobacco to underage minors, to exposure to secondhand smoke in public places, and then e-cigarettes. And on the e-cigarettes point, let me point out that this city became the first major city in the United States actually to have, in effect, strict rules with regard to e-cigarettes. We've been able to achieve this work through some extraordinary partnerships, and two individuals who have been instrumental, as Mitch indicated, in that, in that partnership are here with us. And we're here to say thank you, and with a little bit of melancholy, we're also here to say farewell and best wishes to one of them. Dr. Jonathan Samet and Dr. Lourdes Byasconde Garbenati have been devoting more than 25 years to tobacco research and action, and they provided the expert testimony on which this council relied. It's an honor to recognize their achievements. I will talk about each of them for a moment individually. Dr. Samet served as editor and author of the Reports of the Surgeon General on Smoking and Health since 1984. He's received the Surgeon General's Medalion in 1990 and 2006 for his contributions. He's a senior scientific editor for the 50th anniversary of the 2014 Surgeon General's Report. The melancholy is, we have to bid him farewell, because he is being congratulated on a new move, he's gonna become the Dean of Public Health for Colorado College. We thank you for your testimony, doctor, for your leadership, and for really standing up for the well-being of all of us, especially our kids. Dr. Byasconde Garbenati is a community health scientist and tenured professor in preventative medicine at the Keck School of Medicine at USC. She's worked on tobacco control for 25 years, and is a member of the Norris Comprehensive Cancer Center, where she's co-director and project leader of the Patient Education and Community Outreach Center. She also directs community outreach education at the Institute for Health Promotion and Research. She is on the Internal Advisory Committee for the Center for Environmental Health, and she has built a reputation in the community, here and across the country, for her extraordinary expertise and skill. For two decades, she's worked to, for the State's Department of Public Health on tobacco control issues, and developed all kinds of educational materials that benefit our kids. And for 15 years, she's served as a Tobacco Education Research and Oversight Committee member. So she has an extraordinary record, fortunately, she's staying with us. Dr. Samet has an extraordinary record, which he will bring to our friends in Colorado, but I have no doubt, Dr. Samet, that your research is gonna continue to benefit all of us across the United States. So to each of you, tremendous congratulations, and to Nora, who leads our city attorney's effort on these issues. Nora Monzania has been working on these issues since I was a city council member and she was a nonprofit leader, and Nora, I can't let this moment pass without saying to you that every family in Los Angeles owes you a debt of gratitude. Thank you, Mitch, back to you.
Well, Mike, you said it all, and just, we can't always quantify the incredible success of work like these two phenomenal doctors standing with us today, in terms of the countless individuals they will keep from becoming addicted to nicotine, the countless individuals in the workplace that will not have to suffer from secondhand vapor and the toxic materials found in that, that vapor. These truly are the unsung heroes of the world that do this work that is preventative. And so, it gives me great pleasure to stand here with our city attorney, Mike Fuhr, and Norma, and all the champions of children's health, and all the champions to protect Americans from the dangers of big tobacco, and present these resolutions to Dr. Samet and Dr. Byasconde Garbenati, and just say thank you on behalf of the countless folks that you will never realize you helped and made healthier for their lives, and what an inspiration you are to all of us as policymakers, to look out and look ahead and protect future generations. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Hold on, Mr. Ofero, I want to recognize Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'm happy to rise and thank Mr. Ofero for this presentation, and congratulate all the participants. It's very good to see Nora and Lourdes. I started off as a community organizer, Karen Bass hired me to get tobacco billboards away from schools and parks and places where children's were, and you all were working on tobacco control back then, and we'd always count on Councilmember Mike Fuhr to support our motions, and, and that's actually how I met Council President Herb Wesson, and so, I'm very appreciative of the work that you've done, but I, I want to make sure that we don't downplay the significance of this. In all the roar about healthcare and the cost and premiums and all that, one thing that gets lost is how much the state of California has saved because we significantly reduced smoking. Smoking-related diseases take up much, a much lesser share of the total pie of our healthcare costs, and that's because of the work that you all done, you all have done. You've denormalized smoking cigarettes in the state of California, and especially here in Los Angeles. So again, thank you for all that you've done and congratulations.
Back to you, Mr. Ofero.
Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you.
All right, take some pictures? Step forward, all of us?
Sure.
I think they're moving over this.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and colleagues, I, we have with us some visitors today from our sister city, Nagoya, Japan. We are honored to have Deputy Mayor Kazuo Horiba here today, along with his colleagues, let's give him a big round of applause.
Welcome, welcome, sir.
I would also like to recognize our other Nagoya City officials, Mr. Kazumitsu Asano, Mr. Su Yoshi Endo, Mr. Makio Yamada, and Ms. Mio Nakamura, who have also joined us.
Let's give them a round of applause, a good LA welcome.
I would like to thank Teruko Weinberg, our chairperson of the Los Angeles-Nagoya Sister City affiliation, for helping bring our visitors here today and continuing our strong relationship with our sister city, Nagoya. Of all the cities in the world, Nagoya seems to be one that has very similar demographics in terms of industry and, and challenges as the city of Los Angeles, and it's great to see that we continue to have this strong relationship with our sister city. Let's, at this point, I would like to invite Nagoya Deputy Mayor Horiba to say a few words, if you could please, thank you, welcome.
It is a pleasure to meet everyone gathered here today. I am Kazuo Horiba, the Deputy Mayor of Nagoya, Sister City of Los Angeles in Japan. Allow me to express my sincerest appreciation for the warm welcome from the Los Angeles City Council. Nagoya and Los Angeles began their sister city affiliation in 1959, and we have deepened our friendship over this half-century. Our two cities conduct a variety of exchange activities together, including a high school exchange program that has continued since the year after our sister city affiliation With the opening of the linear Choushinkansen bullet train in 2027, and the Tokyo 2020 Olympic and Paralympic Games, we expect an active increase in exchanges between many people and Nagoya. With the people of Los Angeles-Nagoya Sister City Association, there will be an event promoting site seeing for Nagoya, at the Oshar Residence Concert General of Japan in Los Angeles this November. I hope to continue this long-lasting friendship, which will be further strengthened in such a way, such a way as it has protected results through time, as we celebrate the 60th, 70th, and even 100th anniversary. In order to accomplish this, your assistance is essential. I humbly request your support and cooperation. I would like to conclude my speech by wishing the continuous development of Los Angeles and the health and prosperity of everyone here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Weezer, you may want to share with him that I have visited one city in Japan, and that city was Nagoya, and it was in 1991 with former Councilman Nate Holden, so I, I've been to his great city, and I was just remarking to Justin, it's one of the cleanest cities I've ever seen in my life, so welcome, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mitch Ofero.
Mr. President, we also have a very important delegation visiting us from Afghanistan. So, so please rise if you're the delegation from Afghanistan.
Let's give them a round of applause, welcome, welcome to Los Angeles.
And our friend Sammy Park from the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment has-
Mr. Herman, sit down.
Has brought our guests here today, and they are Senator Mohammed Tayeb Atta, from the Upper House of Parliament in Afghanistan.
Please, rise, you guys.
Also, Senator Homadine Gayanwa, Gayanwa?
Senator, welcome.
Also, Upper House of Parliament, Mr. Fazula Gamkor, Program Officer from the National Trust Organization, Mr. Mohammed Dawad Tapan, a journalist, Azadi Radio Free Europe.
Welcome.
These visitors are invited to the United States under the auspices of the Department of State's International Visitor Leadership Program. The program's objective is to enhance the understanding of US perspectives on the use of dispute resolution and/or preventative diplomacy in domestic and international situations resulting from ethnic, religious, socioeconomic, and regional differences. Thank you and welcome to Los Angeles.
Give them one more, members, let's give them a round of applause. If I, Mr. Previn, are you still in the back? If you could please come to the center aisle. Mr. Previn, you get Items 1, C, D, E, F, H. Items 2, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and general public comment. So go ahead, sir.
Thank you, it's Eric Previn from CD2, that was a very quick jump up, I was, I was enjoying that, that touching recognition. Item number 10 is, we've agreed with the Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf and the EWDD that $300,000 was not fair, we were, we're gonna cover $600,000 of the remediation, so they can move forward with the $7.1 million acquisition to get a little good stuff going on over there. So you're gonna have ice blendeds for the rest of your life, and you know it, it's not fair, but we accept it, and that money is coming, the money that they'll pay will go to the solid waste fund, so you could have your morning coffee, solid weight, we're in good shape on that, thank you for your advocacy. Item number 11, obviously, is Sadio, once again, working diligently for CD1, he's trying to put together the $4,500 to help out in AB 1290 funds. Now, this is a recognition, so we all love recognition, this should cover the bar bill, and hopefully, he made it so that any changes can be made, even orally, to this funding, so, so that should cover it there. Item number 12, here's your various directional signs along Santa Monica, so we'll thank Bonin, and we'll get into that more later, but, but I wanted to say, we appreciate the directional signs, especially on the freeways, but what has it happened, and it's MTA, I think, overlay, I can't tell if it's you or, or MTA, both, the express lanes have started. And the technique for noticing people that there are express lanes that you need a little transponder for, is to tag them with a ticket, just with a camera, so it's very sneaky. I got two, I don't even drive that much, I didn't even know I was in anybody else's lane, I would never, as Bonin knows, break the law intentionally, so this is awful. And then the way to get, to pay your ticket, they say you don't have to pay the ticket if you buy a transponder. So now, whereas I think tolls on people is an interesting area, we should not cite them right up front in a kind of a, it feels almost like you're twisting their arm to get into the program, even if they're willing to sit with the regular people in traffic as opposed to advance in the premium lanes with the rich people. I don't know, I find it a little bit upsetting. Item number 2, that's the hearing confirming a variety of assessments, I believe that we're increasing private ambulance costs by 36%, city's okay with it, we have nothing to do with it other than saying we're okay with it. Item number 6, Coretts is obviously concerned about the zoo, he's extending the glass-
Mr. President, that item has already been voted on?
Oh, fair enough, and item number, yeah, okay, back on number 7, which is a CD13 affair-
That item's also been voted on, Mr. President.
Mr. Previn, get back on the items.
I'm trying, sir, 8 and 9, Mr. Harris Dawson, has continued one of them.
No, Mr. Previn, give him his general public comment.
I'm not messing with you, sir.
Mr. Previn, Mr. Previn, I, you signed up for the items, I identified to you the items to speak on. What you purposely do is you go off subject. I told you, I don't mind you speaking, okay? I listen to you, we listen to you, stay on the items. Now you can speak on general public comment, you cannot speak on items that I don't designate that you can speak on. Now go ahead.
Long live, long live the king, thank you, sir. I am gonna raise the point that in July, hybrid and electric cars accounted for just 44,000 sales in a total market of 1.4 million vehicles, that's 3.14%, that is not good enough, obviously. We want more healthy vehicles on the road, but we're gonna have vehicles on the road nonetheless. That's why my brother Josh and I wrote in City Watch about a road diet in Lincoln Boulevard, and it's worth looking at closely, it was three north, two lanes south, and then the mobility plan said, hey, let's add additional lanes, 'cause it's a, it's a choke point. What we've wound up with is an additional one lane, but we've got a big bus lane and several bike paths and a pedestrian thing as well, so, again, it's kind of misleading. What was upsetting to us was the fact that it only kind of came out post facto for people. I mean, you know, always the details are buried here or there in somebody's case file up in Bonin's office, but the folks want to know and want to understand. It may be a great plan, by the way, I'm not gonna go ahead and criticize the plan, I'm just gonna say that it's a smaller increase than we were looking for.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Pull up, if you would, Madam Clerk, Mr. Walsh, John Walsh. Mr. Walsh, Items 1A, G, Items 2, 10, 11, 12, 13, and general public comment.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number 1, building and safety nuisance abatement costs, you do a good job there. Number G, letter G, that's a particular case. Number 11, number 10, this concerns your selling property to the Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf for development. I mean, you're, you're charging them practically nothing. I mean, you're charging them practically nothing. The going rate would be about $15 million. You're charging them $7 million. So I guess that money that they put in the pocket of the council, the council district, was worth it. $300,000 in cleanup costs. You've raised it to $600,000. They owe. And in fact, it's filthier than that. It's really out of hand. Number 11, associated with, this is a grand opening event. Again, if you do something good, I'm not one of those white people who say you're all a bunch of crooks. Get rid of all these minorities and put white people in charge. I'm not one of those. You have plenty of those that come to this meeting. Unfortunately, or fortunately, a lot of them have died. So they don't come to the meeting anymore. Insulation, number 12. These signs for the Central Avenue Historic Corridor should have been put up there a long time ago. But your skin is not white. And when your skin is not white, you put on the back of the list because the blacks and the Hispanics don't fight for their people the way the Jews do. And I'm not putting the Jews down for fighting the people. I'm putting the blacks and Hispanics down for not fighting for their own blood. Number 12. Number 13, this is traffic enforcement. You're doing a pretty good job on traffic enforcement. But the problem is, the more you build, the more you develop, the thicker the traffic gets, and the worse it gets. Development at this point in this city does nothing but kill people. That's why this, one of the reasons this city is the hit-and-run capital of America.
Just give him his general public comment minute.
I hope, don't look in the LA Times for the story about the shoot, multiple shootings on Hollywood Boulevard because they don't do the stories. Because the mayor flirts with David Zandtizer, who was outrageously gay, and he gets all horny and doesn't do the story. Let me tell you right now, there were two shootings on Hollywood Boulevard last night, a couple the night before. I'm saying to all the tourists, if you come to Hollywood, they're getting target practice for the Olympics because you're committing suicide if you come here for. And if you don't believe, if you think I'm making this up, just Google pellet gun shooting and Hollywood Boulevard, and they all come out. It's out of control on Hollywood Boulevard. Stay away from Hollywood Boulevard. You don't see O'Farrell's white ass. He's having a little conversation with Nouri. Don't worry, he's not going to make a pass at you. Don't ever worry about that.
Thank you, thank you. Could you pull up Mr. Herman on my screen? Mr. Herman. Nope, you're not there yet. Okay, now, Mr. Herman, you have Items 1A, 1B, C, D, E, F, G, H. You have I, J, K, M, N, 2, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. And then your general public comment.
Niggas want to stick to me with the lean. Niggas want to stick to me a damn lean. Well, sick and tired of all these appeals or objections. It's all about the leans. Goddamn leans, goddamn leans. Niggas want to stick me for papers and a lean. They're all unconstitutional. You should waive all the interests. You should waive all the citations and stick your goddamn leans right up your motherfucking ass. That's what you should do with your leans. And I go into Items 2. Regarding public hearings, regarding maintenance of sidewalks. Woollett's versus Los Angeles. Barton versus Sacramento, and you still don't got your goddamn fucking sidewalks together. And you want to hold the Olympics? You want to hold the Olympics for sidewalks by what? Against an annual confirmation assessment? We don't need that. We need an ADA consultant to deal with the money so the fucking sidewalks can get done for $30 million a year at Woollett's versus Los Angeles. How fucking dumb can you get, niggas? How fucking dumb can you get? Damn. Then I go into the Coffee Bean bullshit in CD10. I won't address it. Walsh put it good. Got a goddamn fool who can't negotiate how to sell our business of property. Then I go into the next item, which deals with CD9. What does he mean by that? I'm talking about the Santa Monica Harbor freeways. You got a goddamn fool driving on the road the other day, and he knocks over a sign that says DUI call. But Weezer's not even in his seat. Maybe he should put DUI signs in Boyle Heights and El Solrio so goddamn white niggas there can get a real ticket. Not like his dumb ass. This is just one hell of a day. In my pocket, I can't reload and explode. Down with you all. I'm down with you all. Assholes, it's dangerous to drive on the freeways of Santa Monica. It's dangerous. I don't give a fuck about your weak crew to go out and put up a goddamn fucking sign, but do it anyways because you haven't done a goddamn thing for infrastructure in how many fucked up years? And I'm still waiting for my fucking pass to drive on the fast lane because I can't afford to buy one, as mentioned by Mr. Previn, niggas. We didn't vote for it. You put it there. So fuck you on behalf of the public's interest.
Give him his minute for general public comment.
So these are the struggles I don't want to live. No, sometimes, all the time, I hear death at my motherfucking door. I'm living every day like a hustler hustling another fucking day in L.A. I know you know how it is to wake up fucked up, broke, about your sometimes-stressed-feelled fucked-up day. Now I'm stressing out. I don't want to live anymore. Sometimes, all the time, I hear death knocking at my motherfucking door. I'm living every fucking day like a hustler, another motherfucker in L.A. I know you know how it is to be broke. I just woke up and fell out of bed, come here to give you a stroke. Now I'm all about your time, sometimes, all the time, stressing you white niggas up. Fuck your life and fuck you. Because I'm still struggling, and I want to do something good for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's vote on Items 2, 11, 12, 13, and 14. 2, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Mr. Herman, speak out again, and I'll remove you, okay? This is not your time. Okay, on these items, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. President, for the record, there's a request to continue Item 1G to September 19, 2017, sir.
Without objection. Let's vote on Item 10. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
So we need to send that, I'm told, urgent forthwith? So if we could vote on the urgency? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay.
Mr. President, there is a request to send Item 2 forthwith, sir.
Without objection. Okay, then now I'm going to move to regular general public, I mean, to regular public comment, general public comment. Brian Barahaus, Jacqueline Richardson, Emily Bealan, and John Wright, please come to the center.
So I turned in two, actually, one leaflet. And the last one, I was turning into several offices. The first item, this moment in history, Lyndon LaRouche's moment. I want to clearly identify the role of Lyndon and his wife, Helga LaRouche, which was clearly summed up in a China Daily article put out today, which is entitled "Identifying with China." And what the article clearly states is that the role of Lyndon and Helga LaRouche for world economic development is clearly initiated by China's New Belt and Road Initiative. And what that means is, all of the struggles that we are facing today, all of the degeneracies that you hear today has been cleared up if we go with LaRouche's program.
Thank you. If the next speaker would please come and identify. Just come on. It's okay. Just identify yourself.
I'm Emily Bealan.
Yes.
I'm a resident of the Arts District in the 14th with Jose Weezer. I don't see him, but I'm here to speak in favor of passing a friendly and expansive short-term rental ordinance. I came a couple of times before and didn't get a chance to speak. To me, many of the arguments I've heard against allowing short-term rentals are based on the same fear of strangers that I think is a disease to the spirit of our nation right now. I'm an Airbnb host, and I've had the privilege of hosting a young photographer from Russia, a family from the West Indies, and people traveling here for business from China, Australia, London, and New York. I'm an ambassador for my neighborhood of the Arts District, which has a lot of national attention but has no hotels. And it's really hard to wrap your head around as a visitor without having an access to someone who lives there. I came, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Richardson, and do we have John Wright? Ms. Richardson, come on.
I oppose the presence of the Russian people in Los Angeles. However, not the presence of the Russian Jew. It is assumed the Russian Jew is more than welcome in Los Angeles. I assume the Russian Jew doesn't have three wives, three unhappy wives, go around making children anywhere he wants and not provide for the children. I assume the Russian Jew obeys American laws, and he doesn't try to get benefits for himself that other people can't get. And I also assume that they don't kill. They don't murder women and children. Some of the regular Russians may murder women and children, may rape women and children, may steal, may lie. I assume the Russian Jew does not do these things. I assume he obeys American laws, and they will try to be good citizens in this nation, in this city, and abide by as many laws as they can. I believe that the Russian Jew will be a peaceful force, at least I hope he'll be.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. So do we have John Wright? Going once, going twice? Okay. So that closes multiple and general comment, Madam City Attorney. Let's go to Item 1. I believe we have a card on Item 1. Michelle Sherlo, please come forward.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here on behalf of Beatrice Lorena Hack. Case number 906768. And, thank you. She has sent her regret that she couldn't be here. And I just realized that I was totally under the impression that I was here for a different reason. So I brought you plans, corrected plans, and also all the process that she's been through in order to get her addition legal. So, but I understand this is a hearing for lean, and I'm not really sure what to do. I just request if she could have an extension of three weeks to complete her permit process and whatever the paperwork says she needs in order to comply.
Why don't I cut you off and indicate, I'm looking at the representatives over there, and what they're going to do is they're going to continue this for 30 days.
Appreciate that.
So it will be September 15. So you need to contact the office and see if you can make whatever arrangements need to be made. But as of this moment, that will be continued to September 15.
Mr. President, just for clarification, September 15 is recess. So it's September 19. But just for the record, what item is this?
1N, is my understanding.
M.
1N as in Nancy.
1N as in Nancy.
So that will be September 19.
Yes, sir.
September 19. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so let's vote on Item 1, the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Let's recess the regular, move into the special, call the roll.
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sidio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coetzal, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. 13 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. So what items do we have in special?
Item 15 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 members, I'm sorry. 10 votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, so without objection, that item is before us. I have some cards. I want to call up Mr. Walsh and Mr. Previn and Mr. Barahaus.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, JWalshConfidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. There has been no public hearing. You have not discussed this at all. You will not discuss this after I speak. What this does is allow you to borrow more money on the city's indebtedness. The city is near bankruptcy. But Ms. Zandtizer is in love with the mayor and will not do the story. We're talking about what, read what this says. Fiscal statement? Well, read the statement that the city attorney did. I will accept that. What does it say here? Not completed a financial analysis of the report. There is no report. There is no analysis. You're just continuing to borrow, borrow, and borrow. And Ms. Zandtizer will do the story when you go.
Thank you. Who's next, Mr. Previn?
Well, thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. And a special thanks to Mr. Galperin for outlining the tax base, which apparently the property is $567 billion, 920 million. And that's up substantially, $35 billion from the previous number of $532. So we have a tax rate, and all the bond proceeds that we have to gather and such via tax are measured. And there seems to be, what I'm just a little anxious about, this is confusing stuff, sir. This is a little above my pay grade. But I'm a little concerned about the double taxation. I saw HHH in there. And I just want to make sure that there's a overall tax rate is lower. But some of the little, it seems to me like we're replacing some of the propositions that have died and gone to their natural, because they've come to an end. So some rip-offs are being replaced with new rip-offs. But you guys have been a little slower at putting the new rip-offs in place, is how it feels to me. I can't.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Barahaus, followed by Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, if you want to speak, Mr. Herman, you need to come to the mic.
So if it's not out of my pocket, it's not out of your pocket. But asking for funds. But asking for funds or bonds to replace what? Interest in taxing? It sounds very malicious. Another rip-off scheme by the biggest schemers in Los Angeles, Jason Wesson Jr. You continue to pull out the scams of all scams, another Detroit, another Chicago. That's right, Ms. City Attorney, I'm on topic. I'm protesting, I'm against the taxes. Just the other day, when I attended all the meetings, at every meeting I go to, they were taxing people $300 to $500 to pick up your goddamn fucking trash.
Stay on this subject.
So in regards to the fiscal year and taxes, fuck Mayor Eric Garcetti. Do your job, and I hope to God you don't make it in your so-called race for Washington.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Barahaus, going once, going twice. Mr. Barahaus is not here. On this item, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
13 ayes.
Okay, I wanna send this urgent forthwith, so if we could have a quick vote on the urgency? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, is there any additional business in the special meeting?
No, sir.
Then let's adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting. What's before this body?
Council has motions for posting a referral, sir.
Okay, one second. If I'd like to recognize Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to, yesterday we had the honor of, of opening the USC Village project in South LA. It's extraordinary shopping opportunity and job creation opportunity. And then this morning, we're welcoming some students also from the USC Graduate School of Engineering. They are all here, attending SC from India, and so we just wanna give them a special warm welcome to the City of Los Angeles and wish them well in their studies at the University of Southern California. Welcome to Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Englander.
Yes, colleagues, I want to recognize that today is August 18th. So that's 818 for the council members in the valley. And I also wanna thank Councilmember Krikorian for seconding a motion that I introduced today, actually calling for Innovate 1A. And so Innovate 1A is actually gonna be a sector of the San Fernando Valley, of the light industrial commercial corridor of the Northridge and Chatsworth area where aerospace was created, and very much is a high-tech incubator today with biotech and engineering and technology companies. And so this Innovate 818, we're gonna use to launch off from today as a branding to attract good businesses and good-paying jobs to this sector and this area and partnering with CSUN and many other valuable resources throughout the valley. So just wanted to share that with you and have a great 818.
What's next? Thank you, Mr. Englander.
We're gonna do 420 with Snoop Dogg.
What's before this body, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting a referral, sir.
Okay, they are posted, they are referred. Announcements, members? Announcements? Mr. Price, do you have an announcement?
No, not at this time, Mr. President. Thank you.
If we could all rise for adjourning motions, I will look to, if we could all rise for adjourning motions, I look to my left, Mr. Harris Dawson, Mr. Bonin's side. Now to my right, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Rue's side. I do not see any adjourning motions. Members, this meeting is adjourned.